All right. I call this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls to order. It is six oh five. I suppose we should do the pledge of allegiance again.
Kind of weird, but let's do it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the recovery for which it stands. One nation under a individual. That we can trust for all.
Yeah, I think it might have been grade school. I did it once in school and once at Cubs folks one night. I've never done it twice in a day. That's a good practice. Um, so please note that all the members of the city council are present. Um. Approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. Uh, I have one request of the council. Um, under consent agenda, I would like to pull uh one item out of the consent agenda. Um, just for some very quick discussion and still have every intention of passing it. That would be for Cine uh Cine five's um. Specific licenses. If anyone else has any uh additions or deletions. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with uh pulling that one. Cine five out for the consent agenda.
I'll make them.
We have a motion by councillor uh Holden. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by councillor Wegner. Discussion. Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we go to uh the approval of minutes from December nineteenth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Go to the payments of claims. Uh, we have uh transfers going to the one oh one general fund of two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty cents. Um, and that's coming from the eight twelve lodging tax fund. The council payable, City of International Falls, uh claims of three hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-six cents. Airport commission claims of forty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Airport annual capital claims of six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. And airport runway phase three claims of seventy thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents. For a total uh claims of five hundred and one thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and forty cents. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll move.
We have a motion by councillor Taylor.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Holden. Any discussion? I just want to uh have you guys take a really quick look at pages eight and twelve. Of this document um on page eight midway down, under professional services. Uh, you will see that Winseth has a one thousand twenty dollar claim. And coincident, or not coincidentally, but on page twelve, there's also uh an eleven thousand dollar claim for Winseth uh under the permanent improvement fund. And a thirty-nine thousand dollar claim under the permanent improvement fund. Uh, one of the last things that our uh city attorney, Sherman, did is finalized our um our pending. I don't know if litigation is the right word, but the disputes that we've had with uh Winseth from having them as the city uh. City. Engineer to um moving to Bolton, I mean, with that, there was a handful of uh bills, outstanding things. This is finalizing our uh our timeframe with that. I believe they are, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that um if there's any additional information that the city needs from them. Where they will hand it over at this point, our billing to them is finalized. Is that accurate?
For the previous engineering thing, we are still working with them on a couple of current projects, but. Any previous um items? Yes, this closes everything out and they will be um turning over all the documents that we are requesting.
Just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on on. We have moved past that phase and going moving forward. So we have a motion and a second uh to approve the resolution. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something forward that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, you have an opportunity later as well. Um, we will go right down to the consent agenda. Um. Consent agenda has uh. The license renewals that don't have any alcohol uh or tobacco involved. Approving uh necessary expenses for the mayor and councillors to attend the twenty twenty-three legislative events that pertain to city business. Approve uh expenses for the mayor and councillors to attend the twenty twenty-three elective leaders institute. Um, that's the foundational program and or the advanced program uh. Offered by the League of Minnesota Cities. Approved travel and training for and continuing education for the building official Kelly Myers. The twenty twenty-three annual institute for building officials, that's in Minneapolis, January twenty-third through twenty-seventh. Uh ICC Upper Great Plains Region Educational Institute, that's uh February thirteenth through the twenty seven or through the seventeenth. And attendance at the quarterly Arrowhead Chapter Building Official Meeting and uh required state seminars to continuing education credits. Approved the travel and continuing education for the fire marshal Jared Baldwin to attend the ICC Upper Great Lakes Region Three Educational Institute. Uh, February thir- thirteenth through the fifteenth. And approved the approved the IRS mileage reimbursement rate for twenty twenty-three. And. A resolution delegating authority to make electronic fund transfers to the financial officer and the city administrator for twenty twenty-three. These first meetings of the year, really, there's a lot of stuff. Okay, so uh that's the consent agenda. I would uh uh chair would entertain a motion to uh approve those as presented.
I'll make them.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second by councillor. Taylor. No discussion on the consent agenda. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote uh yes, passes five zero. Um, well, that one item that we pulled out, uh we'll just put that under any other business. Uh, it'll just be number five on our business because we have uh guests that can join us tonight. Um, first item on our under new business would be the Chamber of Commerce request for city support for twenty twenty-three Icebox Days. Denise Koolig and Sean Mason. Thanks for coming.
A word of awareness in the.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Pick me, pick me. Uh, one of the things, and and this is not in any capacity a guarantee, but one of the things that we have discussed with uh. With the Director of Public Works and with uh um. My Wallace is putting in place during that timeframe at Smoky Bear Park. Um, and that that has been a quiet conversation. We have not uh. We we it's something we could definitely look into, but we can't make any guarantees just based off.
Oh, timeframe is is late, but.
We could definitely have that conversation that was something that we have talked about and and uh the Director of Public Works is open to that idea. And the uh in his words, the person that would do it is interested in it too.
Okay.
So that is a possibility if we could uh um but I can't make any guarantees until we get them involved in having that.
Okay.
What kind of activities are you planning at Cary Park?
Well, nothing, nothing right now. It's just that we have the kids' turkey bowling and we have smooch races and I wanted to add a few other things for kids to do. I just needed a big place to do it. Now I could probably find a parking lot somewhere, but I just thought maybe the park might have been um. A nice idea.
You were gonna do it at the time that the hockey tournament was going on?
Yes, at Cary Park.
Wouldn't it be better to do it when it wasn't for a lot? One of the reasons being parking, because.
Well, it's not gonna happen now because the the hockey tournament's the weekend before.
Right, so that so is the we are those dates still open though, where you could hold on?
Thing is maybe we still want to look at hosting those events at Cary Park. That might be even better.
I I would, I had more, I had more cons- more concerns of holding events or with hockey tournament because. I would was just did the best, yeah, parking there would be a lot.
But you're saying to maybe still hold them at Cary Park even though it's the weekend, next weekend, providing there's no other hockey games and other things going on that Saturday though, so.
How about Eighth Street, what we have there?
We just figured it's up and running, I believe. Yep. And and the other thing too is that the concerns that councillor Taylor had is the same concerns that councillor Cross had when we when we had this last weekend. Having that P V hockey tournament is already a big cluster of cars.
Cars and stuff, yeah.
So. Maybe this is the better opportunity that it uh it not being there. But I I think we're more than willing to open, open up city, city facilities to be able to do that, whether it's Cary but Cary Park, Smoky Bear. Or Eighth Street. All of those are opportunities that you have. I just think the administration and and has to sit down and hammer those out. I think the council's already given that, given that uh availability to the change.
Okay.
We would just need to communicate to our head chairs a little bit then. Involve them in discussion much with the converted location and communicate.
And we and on our piece, um I will have some conversations and see if uh that ice running does work. Um, we just didn't know until we started looking at that weather, how much wa- uh snow, everything else and and workload that they have. But that was a conversation that we've had since summers. We tried to do that during my spot today.
Okay.
We did that, we did that for a couple of, well, if you remember, we have the ice cream at Smoky Bear Park and it was really well liked and that was like.
Oh, and I did have a few people say they remembered doing that when they were, when they were young, so that would be, it'd be wonderful to have it, but it's not yet. It's very nostalgic.
Any other questions?
Nothing.
Also asked with, any other questions the council has regarding. About administration? Is there any concerns that we need to hammer out this evening or is this something?
I don't think so. I think as Sean indicated, they'll talk with their group and and then they can come back to myself and we'll work with the public works and see what will work.
Because I think everything that was listed was everything you've done in the past. It, so I think everybody kind of knows what to do, so.
Are the fireworks still?
Oh, yeah, where are those gonna be?
As far as I'm I'm aware of, they are actually Adams online. I believe those are still scheduled as in the past.
In.
In.
In Smoky Bear Park. Well, yeah, they're on the, they're on the road.
Yeah.
And then it barricaded, you know, so many beaten distance. Yep, correct, Adam, you're online?
Uh, yes, we're we're planning to go with that. We have uh fireworks on hand and we're all set to go.
Okay, so it'll be the same place as the parade on the street? Or are you, or will the Thanksgiving parade, the fireworks are done on the street?
Yes.
Yes.
Whatever, so nothing's gonna change from it will be that same spot. Okay.
I think.
Correct.
Logistically stuck at that point because we know that that's a safe spot to send them on.
Okay, right, well, perfect.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next we go to um. Next we go to approvals of twenty twenty-three licenses that may include uh tobacco and or liquor applications. Uh, the one that we have today is uh DG DG Retail LLC doing business as Dollar Store number fifteen six nineteen. They're looking for a cigarette license. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that uh of a license.
I'll move.
We have a motion from councillor Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we go to licenses um that are new licenses. Um, we have two of them this evening. One is Border Boost. Uh, previously Border Boost, new owner kept the Border Boost name. Uh, so it is still Border Boost, but it's a new owner. The second one would be previously Sandy's Place, now On the Way Cafe LLC for a restaurant license. The chair would entertain a motion to approve both of those licenses.
I'll make them.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Bowler. Discussion. Would you like to come forward and tell us about your business? You're wel- you're welcome to. You also don't have to. It's your call.
Okay.
I'm good.
Fantastic.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, congratulations.
Now he's coming up.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, my name is Casey. I mean, you know, my wife's kind of sick right now. She was in a. Um, so we just previously bought the Sandy's Place. January eighth is when we're gonna open um. Relatively the same business structure, actually the exact same business structure, breakfast and five o'clock. Deposed on Tuesdays, uh full menu, uh we'll be going to the, so. I did have, I'm sure she told me a very piece of paper up in the middle of the city, I was supposed to read it to you guys.
What paper was it?
Um, it was a workman's comp.
Oh, yeah, just leave it with uh with Michael.
Okay. Sure.
All right.
Yes.
Hey, you did good.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. That's exciting. A lot of people are looking forward to that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, with with that being said, I know that there's been um a loss of both Sandy's and uh and the fishermen on that side of town. And with that being said, seeing one of them open that up is a great opportunity. Well, I I can say that when I have been to Holiday Gas Station, looking out from that particular spot, it looks like a whole different town from the other side of the road. So, no, I'm very excited and I think that you guys will do really well, especially having um that that site across the street. I think it's gonna be a very, very large piece of. So.
Yes, congratulations.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Uh, next we have uh um some council information. This is uh from. Jackie Nagle, and she's been working uh very diligently on um internet uh for all, which is uh. A way of trying to get internet to rural Minnesota as part of the, well, it may not be a part of. But it's in connection with uh the governor's board and board for broadband initiative. There's a lot of um incentives for rural Minnesota for this. So there is a a virtual um workshop and you guys are welcome to attend. Um, the information is in the packet there. The the key to it really is the more people that have access to internet up here, the more people that choose to move up here because they can live in. A beautiful area with a lake, with woods in your backyard and be able to get high-speed internet to be able to work. It it may not help directly International Falls because we already have good internet, but. The farther you get outside of the city limits, the more limited it is. And what's good for each county ends up being good for Internet also, so. Um, it it's a great uh program and I would highly encourage some of you guys to get onto that if you're interested. Next we go to the uh one item that I did pull out and that is um Cine five. They're just looking for a uh a theater license. Um. There is, we're in northern Minnesota and northern Minnesota brings a lot of cold. This winter, they ended up having a uh waterline break that goes to their uh inner sprinkler system. And I'm speaking in generalities because I don't understand exactly what happened. Uh. I would highly suggest that any of the councillors that have additional questions after we have this discussion, contact uh either the fire chief or the city administrator. Because it is pertaining to a local business. Um, right now, they're, they have to have a fire watch on site when they have um when they have occupancy because. Their sprinkler system is not correctly working. Years ago, when they expanded Cine four and five. They had to bring in a direct water line to that piece of the building. Because of occupancy rules, they don't have enough bathroom space now for those people, so that piece of the building has to be shut off. Um. What we are suggesting is uh after speaking with the city administrator today and uh fire chief, we are uh at giving them a. We would like to give them a thirty-day um or approve their license. Flat out approve their license, but have a thirty-day uh uh give them thirty days to come up with a timeline of how to get that stuff fixed. Um, we want to make sure that uh they are up and running as a business, which is very important to our community. But we also want to make sure that uh the folks that go in there and utilize that business are also safe. So that's a concern that we have. We want to make sure that it gets fixed and doesn't get picked down the road. So that is what what we are asking is for um us to approve their license and to give the city administrator and the fire chief. Uh, opportunity to revisit this in thirty days if they don't. I'll show you with this. I just want to make sure it's right.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council. It would be contingent upon them completing and being in all compliance with all the the different um pieces that they. Need to take care of to be operational. And so we're asking for, you know, approval contingent upon those compliances.
I'll make them.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by councillor Taylor. Uh, any discussion?
One thing, I think there's there's more to it than just that one. From what I understood, so. Maybe Adam.
And and with that being said, they're they're very well could be. I just want to make sure that uh, you know, the whatever is happening, it's contingent on getting it fixed. Everyone, everyone that utilizes that business is safe. We are handling themselves the way that they have been. Uh, expected to from the state fire marshal and from our our fire chief. They've been in compliance from day one as soon as we found out there was a problem. But we just need to make sure. So if anyone has any additional uh in interest in this and we want to speak to the fire chief, we'd be more than willing to inform you guys on the logistics. All right, we have a motion and a second to move that uh or approve that license contingent. Uh, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we go to the reports of the administrator, attorney and department head, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Happy New Year to you all. Um, just a quick brief that I did receive notice today from the county for the county commissioner district reposition. They will be advertising that in this Friday's paper. And that district encompasses the East Ward of International Falls and the West Precinct of Rainier. And that opens for the filings, um I believe it is the seventeenth, January seventeenth. And those are the office file, the filing is being taken over at the auditoror treasurer's office. And then that election will be held on April eleventh. And we will be at um our East Ward um polling place, which is the Covenant Church. For that election on that date.
Anything else?
I have nothing further.
Right. City attorney. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, the only thing is we do now have a new high-falck office. And I'm just glad to tell you today. We have a thing to watch this month. There are these will be. Into the room, but all the mail. We will have a high-falck.
Any uh questions for the city attorney? Are you gonna be at our video recording next week?
I've already been out. Yeah.
Excellent.
Betty informed me that you may want me there.
Yes.
I would be there.
Excellent.
Okay.
I I I would hope she may have given you some information of why we'd like to be there too.
We're like whispering, of course, so I'm sure she will, but like.
Okay.
Maybe I don't want to go.
Maybe I skipped that.
Yeah, I'm thinking if we need the turn. Maybe I'll skip that. Yeah, I I don't know if I'll be there.
I I I will tell you that we are on the verge of some really, really good stuff in our community. And and uh we will be having a discussion about it at the at the next meeting, full meeting. Um, there's nothing, nothing hidden, but with that being said, we want to make sure that all of our ducks are in the hole.
Right.
Okay. Prize for them. Very. Um, then department heads, we have one department head on. Uh, Adam, do you have anything to bring forward?
I don't at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and you are gonna uh be available for all the councillors to answer questions regarding that motion, correct?
Absolutely. I think they all have my contact information, otherwise I'm sure they can uh ascertain that from the administrator maybe.
Excellent. All right, then we'll go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Does that have anything? You guys have all these boards?
Well, the rec- the recommissions still that thing is in one, but we have a little bit. I know Kevin, he's been working on it, Kevin George. But it's it's between the city and Iraq and. City of International Falls, so. It's it's taken a while, but I know Betty probably knows a little more what's going on, but. It's it's gonna happen. There's gonna be a decision made now, but all that's gonna be out.
Pete, you have anything from all the boards and commissions you're sitting on?
Not yet. But. El soup shoot on January fifteenth at Falls. I won the three if anybody wants to throw up and. Support the kids, maybe do some rebound.
All right, I could probably do that, especially if they're stationed.
Yeah.
Councillor Bowler?
You know, other than uh, I know that. I wonder what what we're not the airport with just being um. Because the. Flight that comes in that is the hardest time because the air started to dry and wet this morning. It's out there looking, but last night there was one that remained and another one out in the past that's expanded. I believe they were, they were more and no. I think it's been a minute and a half. And it's something that we have no control, we're like a bit of. Like which in the way that it's. The way it's.
It's one of the things that. The airport gets blamed for a lot of things and it it's basically the landing spot for. The airlines. I mean, they make their own schedule. We don't pick and choose what schedules they choose. They're obviously trying to keep money. And they have. Whatever, whatever uh. Logistics that makes sense for them to come in and out. It doesn't always be, it isn't always uh. Convenient for our locals, but and you would think that that's who you're trying to cater to. But it, yes, there is definitely.
The reason being that when it comes in here, it would be easier on six, six, fifteen, and it has to stop inhibing. Pick up anybody there, yes, and then it's not that a plan to get to the end.
We're not pitching any flights.
Some that that, like I said, we as the airport commissioner, anybody at the airport, they have no.
And then the uh, the other piece that came out in the last airport mission meeting is the funding. There is uh, it sounds like January tenth, we're gonna be having an additional meeting of funding um, that we. End up having the resolution for. For financing it, so hopefully we'll get to some resolution on uh, on that funding. And since we're we're talking about the airport. Um, I really wanted to get off the airport commission. I just need to put the council waiting on the. The reason I chose to stay on there is the more I thought about where. Where we're at as an airport commission. Brian Briggs has been on there for uh, two years as a uh, as a citizen. I've been on there for two years um, after Peter Anderson passed and Walsh has been on there for four years. We don't have any county representation that has ever sat on the airport commission starting again. I just want to make sure that we have um, some institutional knowledge on that board. Again, that is not a board I want to sit on, but I at least. Know where we've been and what what communications have happened and how we've gotten where we're at. Um, it is probably my intention the next time we're on to get off of it, but I do want to make sure that. We have people that. The airport is such a complex needs. I I I still will tell you, I don't understand everything about it, but um, having two years on and I understand something. So I I just wanted to try to keep that that knowledge on the board until some other people get up and moving. Counselor Wagner, do you have anything to add with all your your boards and commissions you're on?
Well, it's it's what it is, is uh. School districts looking at taking over part of their. That would be the athletic part of their. Little kids programs and high school. They currently have high school. Let Bill Mason do an athletic director slash recreation. It would fall underneath the school for all of the athletics. They'd have that athletic director the whole time. To handle the little kids plus. The other thing in City of International Falls would take care of Terry Park Building. Clean the ice and all that kind of stuff. So it would be a combination sitting a live ball, which is nice composed. It's their building. And then. Just do this for good take care of the athletes and setting up, you know, Bill would do the scheduling. All that athletic director can have to schedule all of it. So it's gonna be busy for somebody. And I think that's where all this is going. Betty, I think that's what you're gonna see. Bill Nation's retiring. Um, it's kind of like a good time probably to march on.
Yeah, he's retiring. I mean, this is the time. Take that up on that position and get out there. And and we do take care of the facilities, right? We know.
And it give, I think it even gives more control to the city. We'll take them there. You know, I've been on the director sixteen years and we hire the ones that operate those amber. Uh, Terry Park. In all the towns. I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
And and ju- just go from the chief of cities position on. At least. Not even the city's position on the record. The city's position on taking over um, care of our own facilities. The way that the recognition works right now is is Kerry Park is the only one that uh, that. The recognition hires people to work on that building. The school takes care of uh, Franco Arena. They take care of their their properties over there. It's just Kerry Park. And we have some, we we have some. Loss of communication between something breaking down, something not happening at Kerry Park. In getting from employees to Bill Mason to, I'm sorry, it's just to the athletic director to. The public works to be able to fix that stuff. So things are getting deteriorated faster than what it needs to be. And we're. At least in in the time that I've been on public works, that's the the major concern that we have with Kerry Park is. It has not been kept up because we don't have our city staff there looking at, seeing what what needs to be updated. Because there's someone hired.
There's a few more conflicts.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rizzle Field, Little League Fields, you know, that wants the city of International Falls. Currently the recognition hires people to cut the grass, chalk the lines for the games, neck and. But with all into the city's hands. To get that done, which.
I think when we were even talking about having the phone.
Oh, yeah. Just because he's retired and. You would like to do it together.
I got on against Dragon Shield.
So me neither. It's kind of fun.
Okay, so we got a committee.
Yeah.
All right, so uh, anything else under boards, committees and department? All right, uh, the last thing I I have is I highly encourage in the um, in the uh. The. Consent agenda, we had uh, the elected um, elected. Classes that the Louisiana Minnesota Cities have put on. I believe they have them in both Rochester and in uh. In Plymouth this year. I highly suggest guys going um. I went most years. I always learned something else and this job. I also, when I first got on, I I spoke with every member of our city council and sat down and had uh, had lunch with them. I remember Pete of all people told me something I'll never forget. Oh, yeah. He said. Uh, you know, you really start to figure the job out after the second year. So you're really in the position right now where the the. The newness is more often, really seeing where where we can grow the community and what what. How do we set goals for our community? Well, I I truly believe with everything I have, I go into the leading Minnesota Cities meeting. Is really a great place to start. It gives us uh, it gives us ideas. It shows us what other cities are doing. It also gives us a place to interact and for you just to talk to other people.
Oh, I like that.
And one of the biggest things, whether it's that or my former job or whatever. You also find out you notice backwards and so think here are two top another people. Someone who comes up and that means I've already looked at those. I'm thinking of one to one of them anyhow. I was trying to decide which one.
And I definitely am planning on going to the one in Plymouth, so if you guys kind of get away from me, that's one I'm looking at going to. Um, but.
You're not going to the new one, new, the one for new counselors, right?
So I'm looking at the one.
They're both there, so.
You know, being on the council, you know, burning curve, same thing on the school board. First year. You know, we go down to the Twin Cities and the sort of school board association, we take that in, we have a lot of. Different classes we cook and stuff, you know, very good the first year. Um, then after that, you you're ready to go. So that first year is really important.
Well, I I think the the first year. The first year, the uh, the classes that they give you is really what 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 we're about. It's really. We're not, the goal of a city councilor isn't to direct staff. The goal of the city councilor is to try to figure out how to. How to come up with a combined vision of the five of us, where we want to go and make sure that the city administrator has the tools. To be able to move that forward.
Speaking of the new charter that's.
Yeah.
Yes, there.
So who on the city councils down the second? You have. Fill me in with that.
Second year reinstates your uh, your first year stuff on on meeting law and you haven't learned that one yet, Mike?
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, no, you have.
Oh, yeah.
Don't reply all. Um, so the second one is is that and then it gets into more more depth of as you're looking at your budget. How do you, how do you plan for the future? How do you set monies aside? How do you handle the the uh. Disgruntled residue that is upset about everything? You know, those are the the things. And then also sometimes just how do you work with people that you don't like?
Ah.
But they're they're good classes.
You do a lot of brain. Just kidding.
With that, okay, so now. I threw in my pitch for that. We will go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk, speaks with the council? All right.
They got a section in there when somebody calls you and you keep me on the phone.
Yes.
About potholes or whatever.
Yes, they have classes specifically about potholes.
Uh, do they teach you how to get off that phone, so?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, might be worth going. So so here is one of the greatest things that I learned at at Louisiana Minnesota City. There is a hundred percent of the people that live in your community. Sixty percent of those people don't care about what you do one way or another. There they don't, they don't uh, give any interest except for our tax time. Twenty percent of the people are gonna hate every single thing you do on city council. Every decision that you make, they are gonna be against you because they don't like you or for whatever reason, they just don't like the city council. Twenty percent of the people are gonna think you're the most amazing person in the history of the world, minus twenty-one percent. But with that being, with with that. Where do you focus all your energy? Is it against the people that are calling you and are upset all the time and kicking off all of your. Your, your, your time? There is with the twenty percent that love every, everything.
Those are the ones you send Christmas presents.
You both, I, you focus in on the sixty percent of the people don't care and you try to get them to actually care and to invest in your community. Because the other twenty percent are already there and twenty percent are never getting here. So that's where I try to focus all my energy and now you're in the top twenty percent. So.
This this half of these are, you know, it's twenty percent, but. You'd like to name up on them?
Yeah.
After an hour.
Yeah.
I like a broken tractor, yeah. Yeah, hold the phone out here because they're yelling, whatever. What do you do with them?
Absolutely, you can take your thoughts and get them called. All right. I think we beat this down, but seriously, everyone should go to that class. It's fantastic. All right, uh, in correspondence, you have uh, some information for the convince. Convention and Visitors Bureau, International Falls Recreation Commission meeting information and the International Falls Kitchin County Airport Commission meeting minutes. Uh, reminder, uh, we will be closed on Monday, January sixteenth, so our regular city council meeting will again be on a Tuesday. January seventeenth at five thirty. This meeting is adjourned and we still have. All of our motions are unanimous. See how long that takes. No, those are mine now.
I get one more. Anybody else want these?